Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I would now call the public work session to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke, Mr. Moody, Dr. Whitaker, Mr. Woodard, Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Manager Jones, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. The first presenters will be our Chief Mangabuk and his team to provide an emergency management hurricane season update. Chief.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mayor Glover, members of council. I'm delighted to speak with you this evening. This evening, we're going to talk about this year's hurricane season. We're going to provide a team approach. I'm going to have the, our new deputy emergency management coordinator, Mr. Stephen Davis, to do the bulk of the presentation. And then, we're going to have Deputy Chief Justin Arnold, who was the former deputy emergency management coordinator back in 2016. And he served in the role during Hurricane Matthew. So, he'll, he'll have some institutional knowledge and hopefully be able to answer your questions as we move forward. So, really, the portion of emergency management for, for the citizens at home and for everyone who is not familiar is that this team during major incidents or disasters, they provide the city with the ability to interface internally and externally with the entities such as other city departments, Portsmouth Public Schools, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and FEMA. So, they're pretty much like a project management team. They are there to plan and organize whether it's a planned event or an unplanned event to make sure that the city maintains its continuity of operations and the citizens are informed of any hazards or dangers that are out there. And for tonight, we will be talking about the hurricane season. So, with that, I'm going to introduce to you our deputy emergency management coordinator, Mr. Stephen Davis. He comes to us hometown from Portsmouth. And we brought him back from Washington State back in January. And he has hit the ground running. And he has a lot of energy. And he's excited to be here to present with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. Mayor, how are you doing this evening?
City Council Commissioners, good afternoon. Vice Mayor, Ms. Jones, thank you for this opportunity again. My name is Stephen Davis. I'm your deputy emergency manager coordinator. I'm giving a presentation this evening for the work session. So, thank you again for the attendance. Here are the objectives that we're going to discuss for our work group, 2022 Hurricane Season Forecast. Historical perspective, increased capabilities, evacuation strategies, enhanced community This slide pertains to the forecast predictability for hurricanes and named storms that we may have in the Hampton Roads area. This information is coming from AccuWeather here from NOAA out of Wakefield. It's predicting for 2022, 16 to 20 named storms, six to eight hurricanes, three to five major hurricanes, and direct impact to the United States, four to six. And at the very bottom of the slide, you will see some of the information they're providing, what's normal and what the predictive aspect of forecasting for these storms in our area. Here is our hurricane time guide for the Hampton Roads area that we'll be following. Once the storm is named and they've identified it as a hurricane, we'll start preparing and planning in our department, emergency management. Establish a unified command. The initial unified command meeting will hold. We need to start identifying objectives, how to prepare resources for the city. As a storm approaches three days out or 72 hours, we will stand up and start identifying our command and general staff meeting, hold that with the staff that have those positions in the incident command structure. During our tactics meetings, and if you also see at the very bottom of the arrows, we start getting our resources, personnel, start scheduling staff, and getting prepared as it's three days out. And also augmenting with the police department, public works, to be able to get those equipment and resources ready. Two days out, we have again a planning meeting. We start updating and finalizing our incident action plan, what identifies that in our objectives. We all agree on that. And then, we're ready for that. One day out, operations briefing at the last part of the presentation, and the start of the operations period, a 12-hour sort of operation periods go for the storm, and a 12-hour cycle, the 24-hour cycle. And then, we begin to create new, a new action plan in the next segment. The Simpson Hurricane Wind Scale is basically for storms that are coming in with their hurricane force winds. So, we all know from hurricanes and as far as knots, we're watching the Weather Channel. And they have a predictability of how many, how the impact of the storm, the winds that it's bringing, the pressure. So, as you can see there in the presentation, one, the winds and the knots of winds, 64 to 82 miles an hour. A level two, a category two storm, 83 to 95 miles an hour. Category three, 96 to 122 miles an hour winds. Category four, 113 to 136 miles an hour. And category five, when it exceeds 137 miles per hour. This is some of the historical, this represents this slide in the slide deck, gives you just a visual indicator of the storm is leaving the Gulf right there in Florida as is proceeding north, probably heading northwest. And depending on how the storm is coming, bringing by the winds coming into our area. So, you can see there, it's in Alabama, traveling the eastern seaboard, bringing lots of rain. So, we have to prepare for that. So, we did a little bit of historical data there. Hurricane Hannah was in this area September 9th, 2008, was a wind event, 46 to 60 miles an hour with approximately one to five inches of rain in the immediate Hampton Roads area. We had Hurricane Irene, August 27th through, in 2011, impacted the area with strong winds, storm surge flooding, and up to 12 inches of rainfall in our region. Hurricane Matthews in October of 2016 broke wind gusts measuring 75 miles an hour in Naval Air Station Oceana and also Norfolk Naval Air Station in Norfolk. Southeast Virginia had approximately 611 inches of rain in our area. Increased emergency managed readiness. We're prepared, regionally prepared training. So, we've done active training here in this localized area in Chesapeake, a full functional exercise, at the Chesapeake Safety Operations Center to review and test resource management capabilities in case we have an event that happens and impacts our area. We've also done flood response programming, high water vehicles, swift water rescue capabilities. We have the boats, we have the personnel, the protective equipment, and the transport trailers to get the boats to the area that's needed. Implementation of Crisis Track software application. This application, it can be utilized for both pre-incident and also post-disaster assessment for residential, commercial, and cultural structures to be able to assess the areas and see the impact of the storm. That last bullet point is increased logistical visibility. That is unmanned aerial vehicle, which for drone, that's the acronym what it stands for, and the operator to provide real-time information to the emergency operating center. So, the drone, once it's launched, we can see live feed of the area that's being impacted or affected by the storm. So, it gives us that capability. City Council and the Office of Emergency Management Hurricane Preparedness. This bullet, we can utilize effective communication flow during a significant event that may impact citizens and their issues. Provide information pertinent with the event situation assessment, response, and recovery efforts. We can assure that resources are being utilized to help restore critical operations, and if need be, declare a local emergency if the situation warrants. I'd like to introduce Chief Arnold. He'll come up and give this segment of the presentation.
Hi, good evening. Good to see everyone again. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we appreciate your time tonight. I've had the, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate pleasure to be in the position to work with you, some of you definitely on the diocese or diocese with the planning and implementation of our plan. A lot of what we do is to prepare, you know, over the years, especially before Hurricane Matthew, we were a very reactive organization. Just because of the size that we have in this area, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of predetermined assets and resources that we're able to kind of put in front of an event, whether there be a hurricane, a tornado, flood, you name it. Since then, we've come a long way. We've added quite, quite an abundance of resources to pre-plan these, these events, even all the way down from active shooter to hurricane, you name it. We're trying our best to really encompass the all-hazards approach. Specifically with hurricanes and what the council can provide us as far as policy direction, Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Law, Section 44, allows with consent from council, the city manager or at that time, she would be the director of emergency management. It gives her that option to declare an emergency. Sometimes, we do that in conjunction with the state. Sometimes, we can do that independently as a, as a local. What that does is frees up a lot of bureaucracy and red tape. It frees up resources that we can get immediately. It could kind of open up the funding chain from the federal all the way down to the local government to allow us quick funds. So, if a city council member wanted to know, you know, why are we doing this now? It seems a little premature early when other cities aren't doing it. It's really because of our small footprint in the region. We don't have a lot of bases comparatively to other regional cities. It allows them to pre-stage assets to us first and kind of move everything else to the outside, if that makes sense. One key component as we, as we activate the emergency operations center is that the policy group that the city council would form is kind of, it fluctuates with the size of the event. So, you could have a city council, city management, city attorney policy group, or if you had a very large-scale event, that can include the governor, federal resources, congress, congresspeople, you name it. So, that, that is scalable to the need of that, that event. What's most important of that policy group, though, is the interpretation by the city attorney for you as policymakers. They're going to guide the, you know, curfews, state statutes, anything that really represent or ties around the city's involvement of that emergency declaration and subsequent response, which is very key to federal response and recovery on the, on the backend, right? And that comes down to either working with the schools for building acquisitions, getting transportation in to move your constituents out of flood-prone city, flood-prone neighborhoods. The example is endless. For you, the work really began in 2019 for this particular council because every five years, we do an emergency operations plan. That emergency operation plan really takes the hard work of setting the playbook for a disaster of this sort, of a hurricane, and lays it out in front of you. So, in 2019, city council did adopt our current emergency operation plan. And that tells us really the, the basic framework of any type of incident. So, that's a hurricane, tornado, loss of water, loss of electricity, you name it. It's kind of covered into that emergency operation plan. So, we can essentially plug and play at the council level, kind of the response or a thought response, what would be in that. Of course, it could, category five is going to be different than a category one, but it really fine tunes council's idea and action of what that game plan would be coming into those 72, 24, 48-hour time blocks that he, that Mr. Davis mentioned. One thing that's paramount from us as emergency managers is that we get you timely information. That's from the storm's formation to probably a week post-storm. We want to make sure that you know what we're doing to prepare, what you can inform your constituents. A lot of constituents will come to you directly. They want to know right then, what are you doing to prepare for our neighborhoods? What are we doing as a city to really combat any type of known issue or unknown issue thereof? So, they're, they're really going to look for that information. And on, on top of that, the constant, consistent message is really beneficial to all of us. There's oftentimes, we're going to say, we don't know. If you asked any one of us and, you know, what's the damage going to be from a category five hurricane if it makes landfall in the city of Portsmouth? I don't think any of us could provide that. It's going to be devastating. It's going to be obvious, it's going to be some impacts. We're going to have to move our best to move as many people out of the city as possible. It's, it's hard to really just wrap your head around that. But we're going to do our best with that consistent message of really saying, I don't know, or pushing that message as consistently as possible is going to be the key to our success and show our operational folks that are out there with their boots on the ground that we are motivated and we're behind them. So, I'll turn it over to you to finish up. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gentry. This portion of the presentation is the evacuation strategy, know your zones. So, some of those areas that are close there by the riverfront are more prone. So, we've put this as far as color indicated there for zone A, B, C, and D. And also, the traffic flow in some areas of the country may be the contra-flow. So, we may have to solicit the aspect of the state police to let them know that we're providing routes or pathways for citizens to leave onto our roadways so they can get to higher ground. That's what this slide represents. This aspect of the community emergency shelters, the City of Portsmouth Sheltering Working Group, which we have, is a collaborative group of city, of city entities, Portsmouth School District, fire, police, EMS, public health, behavioral health, information and technology, social services, American Red Cross, and the Portsmouth Public Parks and Recreation. We also have currently now a memorandum of standing, MOU, is in place with the Portsmouth Office of Emergency Management and Mercy Chefs. City of Portsmouth Emergency Management demonstrates effective support services with emergency sheltering needs, pre-event review of emergency sheltering capabilities. We've done that presently. And we, it's ongoing that we're doing it with the sheltering group here in the city. This is an opportunity for any questions. That would be over. Thank you again for your presentation. Good attention.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis, thank you for the presentation, Chief Mangabuk, and Chief Arnold for your input as well. I know that we have a lot of groups in the area. I'm a member of a sorority, and we have our own emergency preparedness groups that we set up and we contact each other to transfer information. Is this being made available to those groups or like civic leagues so that like little internal groups could have some ideas of some plans that they could kind of put in place and be ready for?
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for the question. We can have this available for those groups, nonprofit groups or sororities, fraternities in the cities, they want to have access to it. That's not a problem at all. If they want to utilize this as their planning aspect for it, sure, we will have it available for them, ma'am. Not a problem.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Davis, thank you for the presentation. Am I understanding that council needs to pass a policy here, given the directive emergency management, the power to declare a local emergency, or has that already been done?
Well, it depends, sir, on the nature of the impact that it has on the city, Dr. Whitaker. So, when that, when that happens, we've exceeded many of the resources. If we take an example, Dr. Whitaker, if it's a category three and it affects water, a critical lifeline of the city. So, we want to prevent it from cascading into another effect. If we can't get, almost like in New Orleans, once the levees broke, it had a cascading effect, we couldn't get services in. So, we have to declare a local emergency to be able to get those services in. And that, I won't say releases funding, but it gives us an avenue. We have to get equipment in. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a pump that works with a generator to be able to get those services in, Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, the, the question on page nine of the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Is mentioned here about a local emergency may be declared by the directive emergency management. And the question I'm asking is, does council need to pass a policy or does that already exist?
Sir, our charter already has that in writing. I think it's actually in chapter one. Emergency management was developed in the city of Portsmouth by the charter, and it produces the city manager as the director, the fire chief as the coordinator, and then, Mr. Davis as the co-coordinator. That kind of effectively brings that disaster law into compliance. And then, with councils convening and to approve that declaration, makes it, makes it binding.
Okay. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. Do we have a chart that along with the wind and the pressure would indicate that we should evacuate? And the levels of evacuation because of the winds and the pressure, you know, like low-level evacuation in this area? If this wind and this pressure occurs, and then it progressively goes up, do we have a chart that we can put together to?
Mr. Battle, it's a great question. So, what we use is a program called HIRVAC. HIRVAC is a national program that's done by the National Hurricane Center. That takes all the mathematical calculations into effect. So, it takes the wind speed, direction of the tide, the time of the tide, any possible storm surge, and gives you a number, right? I think in the last presentation I gave to council, I used one of the models. If Hurricane Harvey-style scenario would have happened here in Portsmouth, we ran those models. We would have been completely covered with water. The only place that wouldn't have been above land was Cavalier Manor. Then, you take a storm like Hurricane Matthew. Hurricane Matthew never really made landfall. It made a hook, went back out to the ocean, but the bands are what gave Portsmouth locally 18 inches of rain in a very short amount of time. And that was my trial by fire. We laughed the laugh of, so the models, they're only as good as that, that intel can provide and is subject to change.
What I'm saying is, do we have a standard model for no matter what the combination of wind and pressure is?
So, I think, are you referring to the, the model that we have here, the know your zone? So, if you see here on the back, we have a hurricane evacuation zone. That's done by levels of flooding. We in Portsmouth actually designed that based on what we have seen flood in the past. So, the blue area is what's going to, it's the biggest concentration based on those flooding scenarios that you speak of.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues on council?
Well, I think it's very important, and thank you all. I would just ask the question, I'm sure the, the answer is right before me. When will we release the 2022 preparedness information on the city website? Have we released that already?
I don't know what to say.
Okay. So, so, yes, I, I think that all of this is timely and hurricane season is upon us. And thank you all for such an engaging and in-depth presentation. And I hope and pray we don't get one of those bad storms this year.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Madam Manager? You have the floor, ma'am.
Next, we have Daniel Jones, who will lead the discussion regarding the hybrid meeting functionality.
We're coming before you this evening to update you on the hybrid functionality, possible policy direction, and some report books that you have requested in the past as to the interaction between citizens, council, physically or virtually. So, just the topics that we'll be looking at this evening is a historical review of the functionality, operational status, where we currently are, some policy considerations or recommendations, and then, of course, any next steps depending upon those three prior items. So, this part of the historical review, if we look at a pre-pandemic type of architecture, those were all in-person attendance. Anybody wishing to speak to council, speak on an item or anything of that matter, would have to come before council in a similar type of style. They would register to speak, they would speak on the item. Or they could send you an email, an actual letter through the postal service, leave you a voicemail, or anything of that nature. But if we fast forward to during the pandemic times, that's when in-person attendance was cut down, there was limited physical interaction. And the virtual attendance of you yourself as council was permitted by executive order to hold a virtual meeting and have virtual interaction. But since that time, we're now in a post-pandemic, that executive order, of course, has expired. You are now back in-person meeting as, in the general way, a pre-pandemic nature. But during that pandemic, the public interaction, when we got towards the end of it, there was speakers that was addressing council on the virtual format with audio/video picture just as they would if they were in council chambers, talking to you, talking to you directly or face-to-face. The operational status, as we just talked about, post-pandemic, we are now, of course, given that we are all here, we're in-person attendance, both the council and the public. If citizens want to address council, they come before you, they register to speak, just as we're doing. They can also do, as we mentioned before, emails, letters, voicemail, things of that nature. But the participation of you, council, is limited by Virginia code. You have to be in-person. But there is nothing that, from what we found, and I'll ask the city attorney if I'm out of bounds, that prohibits any citizen interaction from happening virtually. They can address virtually, but you yourself have to be in-person. So, with that, the city clerk's office video services and information technology, we held numerous meetings with vendors. We conducted numerous, what we refer to as this brainstorming sessions. We looked at possible scenarios and platforms, how to retrofit the technology in this room as well as in the back that controls your video, your audio, your mics. Looked at all those different types of cost proposals that were all the way from a massive amount of money to no money, just depending on how much that you wanted to retrofit or overhaul. We conducted a functional meeting test that would allow a virtual interaction just to see if it could be done under this architecture. And that was, that meeting was a success. And by a test meeting, that's not a meeting of council, that was a meeting of just a couple people virtually and interact just to see if the technology. So, and as you can see, just some of the parallel technology upgrades, you see where the CDCO used to be, now there is a screen that would display voting and/or any kind of virtual interaction, should that be the case. So, just some of the policy considerations and our recommendations from staff, should you, as council, choose to go forward. Concerning the audio/video, we would recommend at the onset, the beginning, just the audio only. And that being, if you allow video, we have no control over what a citizen or individual that joins the meeting in a public forum displays on their video. We have no delay. So, if they show something that is either out of conduct, out of code, we can't stop that. The only thing we can do is, we can remove them from the meeting, but at that time, it's already been displayed. The meeting cadence. So, if a person joins from a virtual, are they to speak before those that are in-person attendants or after? Staff recommendation that the in-person people that attend the meeting would have first priority, and then, you would go to virtual, should that be the case. The virtual registration, right now, and, whoop, if I'm not mistaken, you have to register to speak by 6:30 the night of the council meeting. Staff recommendation, if you're doing this virtually, that you would need to register by Friday before that Tuesday meeting closed the business 5 o'clock. And that's assuming it's a standard Tuesday meeting. We say that as a recommendation because when you register, we have to verify an email address, we've got to get you the meeting link, we've got to get you the joining information. This is not something we take a piece of paper and put you on a list, and you come up and speak. We would also recommend a residential limitation. And when we say that is, when you open a virtual platform up, if you don't put any policy or guidelines, there is no bounds of where somebody can join from or where they live as residents. Now, granted, this is Portsmouth, but certain either hot topic items that come before council, if you don't limit the residential, you could have people from other states across the world joining just to address you as council. So, that's why we would recommend that it be limited to Hampton Roads or even a Virginia address, something that would be applicable to you as council that would have meaning. So, the next step, first and foremost, you as council, if there is the consensus, if there is still direction to go forward, that's for you all to decide. Upon that, if it is choose to go forward, we would recommend that you direct or work on some type of virtual meeting policy outlining those items that we just discussed. on some type of virtual meeting policy outlining those items that we just discussed. How they speak, when they speak, who's allowed, audio/video, all those different items. Then we would work towards the audio implementation, the testing, getting everything set back up. And then, of course, communication training. I know that topic may sound easy, but for those addressing council and citizens, that means there is a delay from the time somebody is addressing you to the audio getting into the chamber, being played over the speakers, then you addressing back, going back out, them receiving. So it's kind of like before, if you would call into a radio show, they would say, turn the volume down on your radio, wait for the reply because there is a delay. That's just that training we're referring to. And then, of course, any virtual meeting staffing coordination internally within the city. And with that, if you have any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Are there any other cities that are presently doing this? In this area, I mean?
Yes, I don't know for sure. I know some of them had some type of hybrid at one time where they could call in. I don't know if that's still the case or not. I can't speak.
Okay. I mean, not that it matters, I'm in favor of the hybrid. As far as the staff recommendation for the Hampton Roads, Virginia Residential Address Limitation?
Yes.
Is that, has that been clear by legal, that that's allowed? Because persons who come here in person, we've had people to speak to us who are not from this area. So is that clear through legal as a recommendation?
No, that's, that's just a recommendation we put forward. I haven't, that hasn't been looked at from a legal. That's looking just on the virtual, that when you have a virtual, it's gonna open it up to anybody and everyone, regardless of geographic location.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for the presentation. Should we proceed with this process? How much staff, your staff or technical staff, will we need to help support on days that we would have a meeting that would be of a hybrid nature?
So that would be a coordination, of course, internally between IT, the City Clerk's Office, and Video Services, that we would need to really flesh out, just because there has to be somebody that's there monitoring the meeting, the entire meeting, working the back. So that's, I can't really give you a number as to how many people that would be, but...
It is gonna require some staff.
Yeah, it's gonna be more than it currently and presently is. Yes.
Councilman Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dane, for your presentation as well. One thing that I have concerns about this is, are we gonna put a cap on these speakers? You know, because what we don't want is, you know, a 20-person lineup of audio speakers. And you already said it may be problems with delays. You know, I was trying to, trying to champion the video aspect of it, but you're saying that the audio may be better than us going with video because it may run into certain problems that we can't censor. So, you know, that's one of my concerns, but I do think, you know, the council should consider putting a cap on it because right now, it's a known fact that, you know, it's not the same scenario, but it has relatively the same problems. But employers are just having a hard time getting people to come back to work. So I think our main agenda as leaders in this community is to make sure that we interact with the community. So, you know, we do want to make sure that we have a genuine effort of participation from our community to come in-person, but we also want to make sure we have the option of them being able to do this hybrid model. So, you know, I just want to voice my concern with the council at us looking at a cap on virtual speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Jones, can you do me a favor and remind everyone in the audience and us, you know, some of us on council? What, what media do we have in place today where someone can look at our council meeting? What are the media resources we have in place? Do we have Facebook? Do we have YouTube? What do we have?
So we do have, our two primary sources is Facebook and YouTube. All meetings are streamed live currently, right now, on Facebook. If you pull up the Portsmouth, Virginia Facebook page, you're gonna see me addressing you and you talking to me about a two or three second delay. That's live. They're also recorded by the Video Services team, and then those videos are later uploaded to YouTube for archival, as well as for whoever, if you want to play it. And then beyond Facebook and YouTube, there is the PCTV, which is the Cox Communications and Verizon local government channel that will play meetings in rotation or announcements in rotation, whatever the PCTV rotation is as far as meetings or programs, those are played, whatever, according to that schedule.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the concern. You say that we can't control the video of what somebody may show when they, when they call in and they're also on video. But the same thing is true here tonight and every night, that we have a meeting. We don't control that, so I don't understand the, why we, now we have to control that aspect, but we're not controlling what takes place at normal meetings.
Yeah, and Councilman Moody, that's an excellent question. So I would compare that if the same type of circumstance, if someone comes up to address council, there are limits of where signs can be placed, what you can hold or what you can place. Also, if someone chose to come in City Hall and they were indecent, to say the least, they would never make it to the podium.
Well, yeah, I could certainly understand that, but we also can't control what they could pull out of their, their pocket and hold up to the camera. So, I mean, it's, none of it's 100%.
Correct.
So, I don't know. I, I think I, I would probably go on the thing to keep the video and the audio. I mean, that's, that's me.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
I just want to follow up on what the mayor just asked in regards to the other media and Facebook access, since we're talking about the media. So if a citizen wants to watch live stream at this point, they go to the city webpage looking to find that, how would they actually click onto that?
So if they, they can actually go to a URL, which is portsmouthva.gov/stream, and when they tap that in their computer, their mobile device, or whatever, that will direct them to Facebook.
Okay, so, so what if they don't know about the slash stream and they just go to the city website looking?
Yeah, so there is a link on the city website on the left-hand side, the menu bar, that has the stream. If they click that, it will take them to the same place.
So it just says video?
It says council being livestream, I think it may say.
Okay, okay, all right.
And so we, we really appreciate the information. At this time, it, based on the direction to go forward or not go forward, I believe, based on what you explained to us, we will need a consensus from council to move forward in a direction. So what we're asking, I guess, is the consensus. Madam Manager, would it be appropriate for the consensus to be either to remain with what we have or move into some type of hybrid direction? Is that...
Correct. We want direction to move into a hybrid because we would need to flush out the policy, we would need to flush out the calls for additional staff, and whether the phasing, the audio was in relationship to phasing it, not stating that that was the only thing that we were going to do, but if we were gonna move forward, we would want to do that first and then incorporate audio and video once we were able to clear that out and get that to a level of comfort. So, yes, the question to the council at this point is, do we want to remain with, in-person or go with exploring the feasibility of the hybrid functionality?
Thank you, ma'am, for that clarification. So with that on the table, Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Well, is the hybrid situation an emergency situation? Or will it be standard operating procedures for us?
Under this, if council chose, this would be standard operational, that if you were here in-person, absent of executive order, then citizens could address you either by an audio or audio/video, depending on the timing.
Councilman Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so they will be able to call in with live audio and be able to communicate with us as council member and citizens, stakeholders?
Correct. Yeah, so they would have, under the audio only, there would be a number that they would call in and sit in queue. When their time come to speak, they would be allowed into the meeting, you would hear their voice over the speakers. When you wanted to refer back to them, you would turn your mic on, just like you're doing now. That would get played back through that platform, they would receive your communication, and that's how the interaction would happen.
Right. And just for clarification, they don't do that via our streaming site or Facebook or YouTube, right?
No, no, that would be separate from that.
Right, absolutely.
They could, they do comments currently now on Facebook?
Yes.
But those are not interactive back by council.
That's right. Thank you.
So we're all clear? If there's a consensus, if you would raise your hand, if you're in favor of moving forward with this hybrid process? I see four in favor, so I guess moving forward with the process is what direction we'll take.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So just to be clear, what we're going to be working on next is phasing out and flushing out what this looks like, determining the cost, determining those policies that we need your direction on, determining like the length of time a person can speak, you know, the priority of who goes first and when. All of that will be flushed out when we bring those items back.
That is my understanding, and, and I think that's how we need to proceed because there are still a lot of unanswered questions of how that will actually work, and I think we need to bring some examples to if it would, would, would be a part of the process to see if we know of someone who actually has this in place, to kind of provide us some information on how it works for them as well. I think that may be helpful.
Mr. Jones, during the pandemic, when we were having video and audio, was there ever any issues that we weren't aware of that came up with the video presentation from our citizens?
No, I don't want to say that there was issues that, like we have concern about during that time.
Oh, okay.
But there was, other municipalities experienced that issue, and that's kind of our, our guarding mechanism.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. And I think, as I said, bringing back examples would be helpful to all of us to see what that would look like. Thank you.
And Madam City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, the next thing I have is a summary regarding the city manager report. The first item being 22-152 for 29,000 behavioral health services. Approval of these funds will allow additional community engagement support and COVID-related equipment for staff. The next item, 22-153, there's an estimated cost of $3,000 that would need to be flushed out. This is for the adoption of an ordinance to name a small neighborhood park, the Wilson Ward Gospel Meditation Garden. The Parks and Recreation Commission voted unanimously in favor of the name. The next item, 22-154, permits and inspections. Section 7-103D of the city code requires a full inspection before a property that has been vacant for 90 or more days can be reoccupied. In effect, to continue to improve permitting efficiency for citizens, this ordinance requires your approval to eliminate the commercial reinspection requirement and reduce the time required to occupy the building. The next item, 22-155 for 53,895 in planning. This is an adoption of an ordinance to accept 24,000 in additional CDBG funds for the sale of land income and $29,895 generated from repayment of loans. The next item, which is 22-156, this is adoption of an ordinance to acquire 320 Quebec Street to improve stormwater and flood mitigation programs by preventing development in flood hazard areas. The next item is 22-157. This is a resolution authorizing negotiations for the use of beds at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. And the last item is 22-158. This is an, this is adoption of an ordinance to authorize the city to participate in a gun buyback program in partnership with the Black Caucus. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Miss Manager, why are we negotiating bed spaces for a regional jail?
We're gonna discuss this further in closed session.
Yes, ma'am, but I really don't think that's a good policy for the city manager to be working for an outside agency. I have several things to mention about that, and, and I'm truly not comfortable with us negotiating anything for an outside agency.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, I mean, we can definitely discuss that, but as Chair of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, we have had conversations about the bed usage that we're not using, and everyone knows that, that we're not sending any inmates to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. So that has been some discussion for quite some time. It's not just the city manager's proposal.
Council, Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor then.
Did we get a consensus for, for, to start negotiations about that, about someone else's problems with bed spaces?
That's what this item is.
But you've already started it for years, she just said, discussing that. Again, I don't have anything against any business folk, but I don't, I think it's truly improper for us to negotiate bed space for another agency. That's, that's, that's just not what a city manager and a city council person does, and it seems that this has already been going on without a consensus, but I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
As, as the liaison, which this council appointed me to serve as the liaison to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, I am acting on your behalf at that meeting. And, sir, if you would like to serve as the liaison, then you have that option to do that, which no one on this council wanted to do, and is the only female on this council. My council chose to appoint me, and I am doing my job. So you can address that to me.
Well, I think, I think what we need to do at this point, since we've gone back and forth, what I recommend is that any discussion on the matter needs to be taken up in closed session for those purposes, and so that's how we will proceed. It is an agenda item on the city manager's agenda, and we will have to discuss that in a closed session.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, just a question on two of the items. On 22-156, the firearm buyback program, do we have any data on how effective these programs have been?
We do, and we can provide that.
Will that be provided before we vote?
No, because this, this one is a property, and I'm sure that maybe Bob can speak to this a little bit, but this is a property from PRHA.
No, 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 I said the buyback, the firearm buyback.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you meant 22-156.
Right, it is. Oh, our numbers, the numbers have been reordered?
It must have.
On, on our agenda, 156 is the buyback program. On my agenda?
Mine was, okay. So the buyback program, that...
Mine was, okay, so the buyback program that, you know, that program is one that there's mixed feelings about it because some have had good results. And I would say in two different jurisdictions, I've had opposite results.
That's, that's why I was asking, do we, does council have any data on this before we vote on it?
No, no.
I would suggest before we act on something like this that we would have some type of data on how effective it has been or not effective. The other, 22-157, I hope that this could be considered also after we get more data on this acquisition of 320 Quebec Street. Quebec Street is located in Penner's Point Sugar Hill Community. The Penner's Point Sugar Hill Community is one in which many predominantly African-American communities back in the 50s, 60s with the Interstate Highway Program, you had those highways, interways going directly through black communities such as Penner's Point Cavalier Manor. My concern is that in reading this write-up, there are two issues. First of all, this is PRHA property. We, currently, I believe, PRHA pays taxes, real estate taxes on their properties.
Some.
Do they pay real estate tax on this property?
I would think they do. I'm not sure of that, but I would think they do because it's, it's private.
It's private, right. So if they are, I'm assuming they are.
Yeah, I'm assuming they are.
Why would, why would we take that off the tax roll? And then the other issue is that it was problematic in reading the write-up that it mentioned how the Penner's Point Community, that Sugar Hill Community, was at one time considered for development. And that, that was not development by those residents. Also, I would want to see too, what has been the assessed value of those properties before that development concept came into being? And I found it problematic that it said since that's a flooded area, an area prone to flooding, that now they're giving these properties back. A significant number of properties were given back in 2013. And so I just want to, I think council should hold off on acting on this before we get more information about the assessed value, how those properties were acquired from those owners. Was it tax issues where they couldn't pay? And the flood issue, I know a lot of people that have lived there in the years and it's really only one part of that section of Penner's Point that has been a flood issue. And so I'm curious, where is this big flood issue coming from? What's the, what's the date on that? So I would ask Mr. Mayor that if it's a consensus of council that before we act on 22-157, we ought to at least get some of the assessed value issues cleared up considering the history of that property and that section. And also get data on 22-156 as far as the effectiveness of those firearm buyback programs.
Before Mr. Battle, before I give you the floor, I want to ask a question of the city attorney as part of the order on these items that are on the agenda, are, in terms of going forward with, with either suspending or not voting on this matter or tabling the matter or not, not tabling the matter, but what's the right word I'm looking for? Help me. Defer the matter, that's correct. On deferring this matter to another voting agenda pending, getting the appropriate information, we're still in order to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So with, with the recommendation on that item, if we could, first, we need to get a consensus to defer the item. And then once we have a consensus to defer the item, then the instruction on what we would like to have brought back for the item. Is that proper?
Yes.
So can I see a consensus on this particular item as it relates to deferring it?
Excuse me, sir. That needs to be done during your seven o'clock meeting.
That's right, that's right. Okay, very good.
We need a motion and a second to defer to whatever date you want to defer.
Okay, we're good then.
I do have a, just to keep with that, so as we move forward, procedural question. Since the agenda has not been adopted, because we, we have not officially adopted the agenda, organizations usually vote on approving or adopting an agenda. Is this the agenda before the meeting has even started? There has been no adoption of it. So can there always be an editing before?
City council has never adopted your agenda before the meeting. What we generally put out is what the council votes on.
Right.
And that's why we said, once the item comes up, you can defer to make whatever recommendation.
Right.
And it's mainly for public information notification purposes.
Right, I understand that we have, and I think there has been in the past approval of agendas.
No, sir, never.
Well, even if it hasn't, my question isn't based on really what a past council has done.
Correct.
Okay, my question is really just procedural. That is not based on what a previous council has done, just straight up parliamentary procedure, that if, if an agenda has not been adopted, then that agenda is prone to be amended or changed or modified before the actual meeting, that you don't even have to get to a meeting to defer. Now, if that's what council chooses to do, I was just trying to get a procedural understanding that so that as we move forward, if an agenda needs to be adjusted, it does not have to be voted on prior to the meet or at the meeting, but it can be done before the meeting.
If council would like that as a body to approve your agenda prior to you all acting, we just need direction.
Well, I'm saying that even if it doesn't approve it prior to, I'm saying, isn't it within the purview, I guess it's to the city attorney, parliamentary procedure, is it within the purview of the council to modify an agenda before a meeting begins, before we officially come to order?
Yes, you can modify the agenda before the meeting has started and you have not adopted an agenda. Yes, you can do that.
So if we wanted to delete these items at this point, we would not necessarily have to go into a meeting and vote to defer it?
Yes, with how you're stating that, yes. If you wouldn't change the agenda, it's not on the agenda, yes.
And if it's on the, even if it's on the agenda, it can be modified or removed prior to the meeting?
It's on the agenda and I believe that your past procedures is not to adopt an agenda. You just have your agenda and you go forward and that's how you normally do it. But what you're saying is technically right. You can't do that. You can't change the agenda before you go into the meeting, but that's not how it is typically done in this body.
But I was just curious, were we violating any parliamentary procedure with doing that?
I do not believe you are violating any procedure with doing that.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think Dr. Whitaker asked some of the questions that I, and some of the concerns I had about 22-156. But for our city manager, I did want to know, is this standard procedure for us to adopt an ordinance every time we have to participate in a firearm buyback program?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Absolutely.
That is what it requires.
And is this something they brought to us for us to participate in?
That's correct.
Absolutely. Is there any details we have on how we're going to get this done? How are we going to get this to out, out to the public, you know, because this is something I, you know, we desperately need. And, you know, the data is something that I, I'm concerned about as well. But, you know, I just want to know how can we get this, these details out to the public?
Once it's approved by council, then we would work with the Black Caucus to get the information out to the public that this, where it will be conducted, how it will be conducted and what it, and they are also working on the raising funds to determine how much will be given to anyone returning a gun.
Is we helping them raise funds or just solely?
That's solely them.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And ma'am, go ahead, Mr. Battle, then I'll ask my question.
Well, let me just be as forthright as I can. It doesn't matter whether you are female, a male, a gay, a lesbian, a city manager, a city attorney, or alligator, doesn't matter. If you don't have a consensus with this council, you are not supposed to be negotiating bed spaces for another agency. And I don't care who you are or what you are, you need the consensus of the council. And evidently, this has been going on by your own emissions. So now...
Thank you, sir. The question, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was back to the agenda. I know that our agendas are posted on the website and citizens already have seen what the agenda entails because I've got some calls about it already. And we may even have some speakers who have signed up to speak to an issue. So the procedure or the policy or the practice or whatever we want, the rule, whatever we've done before, I mean, you know, I would hate for a citizen to come here and there's two items that's not even up there once they get there. So I think the procedure is set in place for that specific person's purpose because our citizens come here to speak to us based on the agenda items that we have put forth. And they've had them since Monday.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
So my question to that would be, what could we do in order to make sure that a citizen doesn't come to speak on the issue and it's not on the agenda if we look, if we're looking to adopt the agenda before the meeting?
What can you do to avoid a citizen from coming? You've already put it on the agenda. I'm not sure what you could do because you've already put it out to the public that it's on the agenda. And if you change it the date of, you would be expecting the citizens to check it before they come. You have to post it. Because say you're in a meeting right now and you decide after this meeting, the public work session, that we're going to change the agenda. You have people that's probably already out there, already on the way. So it's going to be very difficult to change the agenda once it's actually put out to the public and inconvenience anybody from coming to speak.
Can I ask one more question?
You have the floor, sir.
Is it possible to, to vote on the agenda before it's sent out to the citizens?
You could vote on it. I don't see where there would be a problem with voting on before you send it out. I don't know if that would be...
Or get a consensus. Could you do a consensus through email or anything?
You possibly could do something before email, but you still will be saying that I'm not going to change this agenda because you could still get into a session and have different things that you want to change, but you still would have the same issue.
So we can't avoid it?
I don't see how you could avoid it. We could think on it, but you still would have the same issue.
Thank you.
I do have one question related to the gun buyback. Is law enforcement involved with the gun buyback program?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure the process of that. I'm not very familiar with gun buyback programs and the operation of them.
Yes, it's a whole process that we would outline.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Does that conclude your, your report backs and also your city manager items? Thank you, ma'am.
So we'll just vote to defer?
Yes, we'll vote to defer. On those items, when we get to them, we will just vote to defer those items.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. We've now come to city council liaison reports. Are there any city council liaison reports at this time?
I have one.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, there has been some conversations that we have had that have led us to our discussion to bring to the council. And just for the public record and that of my council members, no decisions or ideas or anything has been put forth to proceed with buying anybody's beds. This is on the agenda for us to go and discuss as a professional counsel tonight. So there was just some discussion that our members, localities have had. There are five member localities, Portsmouth, Hampton, Newport News, Chesapeake, and Norfolk. And of course, we all know that Portsmouth has not sent anyone to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. So our beds are vacant, but we still pay to the tune of $5.2 million every year for those beds. So we're bringing this to you to have this discussion today. No formal decisions have been made. Nothing has been done in the past. And as your Chair of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, this is my report to the council.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just, just so, so for our liaison, so in essence, we have beds there that we're paying for.
Absolutely.
And this is a way of defer, deferring the cost?
Absolutely. And we're bringing it to you. We have made no decisions. This is for us to discuss in closed session so that we can determine how we offset some of that money that we're paying for new inmates to be in those beds.
Right, okay.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
The way we'll offset that money is we go to court. That facility has been deemed not safe. That's why we're not sending people there. But we're going to be, the good fellows we are, we're going to pay for the bed space anyway rather than go to court and try to free ourselves of this contract. And it's not a bad position to go to court because they're not meeting their obligation. Thank you.
Madam City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just wanted to respond to Councilman Battle's comment. This does not preclude us from taking further action. This is the interim stage that we're trying to do at this point to try to recover some of what we are expending until we can get to the point where we can come up with a final resolution.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
We haven't been sending consumers to that jail for some times now. And it's been more than enough time for us to have made a conclusion on whether we're going to go to court or not. Now, I don't mind me making money, but when I go up on citizens' taxes and I don't have money to do programs for our youth and reentry programs for our middle-aged folk, I mean, we have to take appropriate steps to get funds to do things like that and to continue to pay for something that's not being provided. And when it was provided, it was not provided in the contract content of the service that we agreed to. And that's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if I may add, if I could provide some clarity, and city manager, certainly you can clarify this, but some of the background information as it relates to this discussion and this resolution, as I understand it, with this resolution, we're authorizing, you know, the manager to have discussions with the city of Hampton, who is in need of additional beds. And just to be clear, just to be clear on what our CEO is authorized to do as it relates to our charter, as the appointed city manager and CEO of the city of Portsmouth, she is authorized to negotiate with city staff and, and other appointees on our behalf. So all this is doing is, as I understand it, So all this is doing is, as I understand it, is providing the city manager the authorization to have conversations and move forward. Is that kind of what it is, or can you elaborate on that?
Correct, because I cannot move forward without city council authorization.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly. Thank you, ma'am.
Well...
Councilman Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Again, it's evident that conversations and meetings have been going on about those bed spaces. And I don't think it's right for any of us to represent the regional jail in negotiating beds with another agency. Now, what the regional jail can do is give us an addendum that releases us then they can deal with Hampton and Newport News for those beds. We have no place in the middle of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your input. Does that conclude the reports, council liaison reports? We do have a need for a closed session. And would someone please read the motion for a closed session?
Yes, I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to, A, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A6 for the purpose of discussing or considering the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly initially, the financial interests of the governmental unit would be adversely affected specifically regarding the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. B, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering appointments to boards and commissioners. C, Virginia Code subsection 22-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering the performance of the city manager. And D, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering the performance of the city clerk.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We are now in closed session. It will take a few minutes to get in the meeting, and then we'll begin. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a need to come out of closed session. So if one of my colleagues would read the motion?
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes? Mr. Battle? Okay, Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if we could take a, let's start the meeting at 7:05, give, allow everyone an opportunity to take care of whatever they need to take care of. This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene the meeting at 7:05.